Thank you. Good evening. Or as they say, a little north of here, howdy. Welcome to the March 2018 East Central Independent School District Board of Trustees meeting. Ms. Berrientos, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Sir Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller.
Present.
Victor Garza.
Here.
James Mulkey.
Here.
John Massengo.
Here.
Mr. Bryant, we have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item two, the prayer and the pledge, Mr. Toscano, please.
Sir, Mr. President, not real sure if you guys could tell that the Sinclair Mustangs are in the house tonight.[37.14][37.14][applause] We'll turn it over to Ms. Williams to get us started.
All right. We are in the house.[46.14][46.14][laughter] First of all, to Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to present our prayer and pledge. I have tonight my wonderful staff here for support, and we have two wonderful Sinclair Mustangs that are with us tonight. Come on up, guys.[66.22][66.22][applause] I'm gonna give them the opportunity to introduce themselves to you, and we're gonna start right here with this young lady.
Good evening, I'm De'Ani Delgado, and this is my friend Gabriel Young.[87.25][87.25][laughter]
De'Ani and Gabriel are two of our best students. Gabriel's loving video games, and De'Ani is loving on gymnastics right now, and so they had to take time out of their busy schedules, so, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.[107.42][107.42][laughter] Okay? So, we will start now with our prayer.
Please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the pledges.
Dear Lord, we pray today that you will let us think about each other, help each other, and show love for each other. We pray today that you will help us to do good deeds. We pray today that you will let our schools be places where we can grow constantly. We pray that our schools will be places of fun and good work. We pray that your power will come into our lives and take control so that we can do the right thing. We pray for all that are gathered here today, and that you will bless them forever and ever. Amen.[162.62][162.62][applause]
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance and pledge to Texas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yo prometo leitar a la bandera de Estados Unidos de América y a la República que representa una nación ante Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Honra a la bandera de Texas. Te juro, te juro leitar a Texas. Dios uno e indivisible. The pride Sinclair must take. Pride and joy we share. The pride Sinclair must take. We always show we care. Pride makes responsibilities, tricks we always use. The pride Sinclair can never stop. We're always at the top, at the top.[263.12][263.12][applause]
All right, and you can see why there are shining stars. They are wonderful. I have with them today Mr. and Mrs. Young, would you please stand? Mr. Young, Ms. Young?[284.77][284.77][applause] Gabriel's parents. And Ms. Delgado, would you please stand?[292.02][292.02][applause] Thank you all so much for that. Today, we don't have much of a presentation. We're not gonna knock your socks off, I bet you. Not. We're just gonna present what Sinclair is. We are Sinclair, and we are family, and as you can tell, this is one of the best staffs that you'll ever see in EC, okay? So, I have with me today who did the whole thing here, presentation.[320.33][320.33][laughter] She said, "Don't blame me."[322.33][322.33][applause] It's one of my teachers, Ms. Ashley Harris, and she's gonna have...[326.31][326.31][applause]
Yeah. Okay. That'll restart. Just kidding.[331.31][331.31][laughter] Okay, so, I just wanted to share some things that make us who we are, that make Sinclair a place where we all want to be there with each other, and I started it by saying that we are family. As you can most definitely see, we show up for each other. So, let's get started. Home is where we call Sinclair. This is where we love each other every day, and it means so much to many different people. And for us, I think it means being a Mustang and being proud to call ourselves Sinclair We also see that a whole bunch of students, and not just the ones that you see in front of you, in fact, I actually made my way through Sinclair along with a few other of our... Raise your hand, people, we ain't all... Not that old. So, we all went through the system too, and you can see we're fabulous teachers now. So, the moment you arrive to our campus, I think you start to feel that sense of love from all of the staff there at Sinclair. Sinclair means so much to everybody because of a few things. We believe in seven mindsets there at Sinclair. This is one of the posters that the kids see every day as they come in. Sinclair is invested into the whole child, the lives of all of our children. We are building relationships from the ground up. I have a thing that I do with my kids in my class. We get... All my kids have created their own handshake we do before the end of the school day. That lets them know how much I care about them. They think it's special, and that's our thing that we do. Ms. Dotson, hey, shout out. Ms. Dotson, too, outside of school, has attended her kids' games outside of the Sinclair School. So, we are not just taking it into Sinclair. We, like I said, we show up, as you can see.[483.24][483.24][laughter] Okay, I don't know, it's okay. Y'all got me, it's good. Sinclair, we have a need to succeed. We strive for success while we are there all day, and it's not... Again, I wanna stress that it's not just something that comes from the teachers. This is love that is expressed throughout the entire campus, and it even sparks between the students. You start to see that the students are starting to care and love on each other as well. We are a community. There's several different things that make us part of our community. We have Avid represented here. We've got our morning show, which is where you saw some of our great work that just took place there, and some of our dual-language students you see here. We are... We put all that together to create our Sinclair community. We have the leadership that makes us special as well. We have our fabulous leaders here. Hey, shout out, y'all. Thank you.[543.62][543.62][applause] That's where we're able to... They communicate with us, we are able to communicate freely with them, and then all of the things that they help us do turns us, the teachers, into better leaders as well, so then that spawns off to our students. As I mentioned earlier, we are Avid. The kids know, they know all about these... The wickers, what I left you guys with here. The kids are very into keeping their things organized because our campus is college readiness. We're trying to show that they are ready for college, and they believe that they are ready for college, which is very important. Kids all the way from kindergarten are already starting that conversation with their parents about being ready for kindergarten, for college as they leave us. And then we have that Sinclair is the ideal environment for us to be, not just the ideal place for us to work, because it is, but it is also the ideal environment for our students to come and learn. I have seen several teachers on our campus that have, in their classrooms, they have the setup for their kids to be able to sit how they would like, that's more comfortable for them, so it's not all just rows and columns and things of that nature. Kids are able to freely choose whatever's comfortable for them. And then we have a lot of encouraging. Our walls are just shout encouragement all day long, so as the kids are walking in the hallway, you can see that there's just so... I mean, all day, they're just being told how awesome they are, and to spark that on to their friends and to keep it going throughout their day. And the "R" for Sinclair would mean for our kids to reach for the stars and to dream big, big dreams. It's important for them to understand that, and we got the opportunity to see that happen with a former student of ours. Ashley Sneed was able to come and be an inspiration to the rest of our kids, to see that her dream was actually put to reality through all her hard work and dedication. Oh, yes, she's the first African-American Miss San Antonio, I believe. Sorry. And so, all that put together, we have so much Sinclair pride, which makes us have even more East Central pride. And with that, we all know, come on, y'all, Sinclair is where? Say it with me.
Thank you, Ashley. At this time, I would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you to this East Central family and everything that you have done for me and my son. He's out there running all over the...[719.12][719.12][laughter] And most of these guys are here tonight because they know that this is my last board meeting where we will present Sinclair, the prayer and the pledge for everything. So, for 23 years that I've been here and been the principal at Sinclair, this East Central family, you've given me love, joy, respect. You've also helped me through some of the hardest times in my life, through sorrow and grief and loss, and I appreciate all that you have done for me. Mr. Bryant, you've been with me through three superintendents.[759.82][759.82][laughter]
No more?[763.62][763.62][laughter]
A whole lot of board members, good and bad, right?[770.12][770.12][laughter] Yeah, that's it. And to the other board members that have served, I... It just amazes me that you all take the kind of care that you love by volunteering your time and everything. And when I was at Ed White Middle School and through the Northeast School District, I thought that was the best place I could ever be, but I hadn't reached East Central yet. So, I just wanna say thank you. Mr. Bryant, you amazed me with the kind of stamina, the strength, and everything you do to show how much you love this district, and I'm just so proud to have known you, and I thank you, and I thank all of you board members. And Mr. Toscano, you're my last superintendent.[819.82][819.82][laughter] I thank you for everything you've done. You've put me in places that I thought I'd never be, and making me grow and stretch and look at myself, so, thank you very much. And to all of you guys from East Central District people and everybody here, thank you so much again for making this one of the best parts of my life. Thank you.[844.43][844.43][applause]
And we have some gifts on free day just for you. In the boxes you'll see, and you might wanna buy one.[883.43][883.43][laughter] Get a motherfucking one, we gave you one, but to know some of you have, it's fine.[891.43][891.43][laughter] Now, I wanna get a free one.[895.43][895.43][laughter] Make sure everybody has a good time at Pia's this year, San Antonio. This is our first Sinclair medal that we have for Pia's, so we wanna say to each of you, I know Mr. Toscano, he said this is fundraising, he bought his, but I'd give him another.[916.43][916.43][laughter] Thank you so much.[922.43][922.43][laughter]
I was wondering why it was so light.[929.43][929.43][laughter]
Ms. Williams, it's common sense like that that makes Sinclair always at the top.[939.66][939.66][applause] Thank you for bringing Gabriel and De'Ani to us this evening, and you did knock our socks off, even though you may not have planned that. It doesn't get much better than that. Our future is in great hands with these young children, these young students, and the wonderful staff that's educating them. You will be sorely missed, and it's been my pleasure to be here during your tenure, and your courage and tenacity has always inspired me to be better than I thought I could be. You're a wonderful educator, you've taught me a lot, and we will sorely miss you here in this boardroom. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.[992.32][992.32][applause]
Also, Ms. Williams, it's been a pleasure knowing you and working with your staff, visiting your campus. Whenever I visit your campus, you're felt and so welcome. They even meet you out on the walk and ask you good morning and all that, and that means a lot when you can walk into a campus and go to the front office and everybody reach you with a smile, and I think leadership starts at the top, and you've done a great
All right, we have a couple of awards this evening, so if y'all would bear with me for a minute, we're gonna have our awards and recognitions, and then we'll take a short break and let everybody go home to do homework or grade homework or get back to video games or those things that need to be done this evening. So, bear with us for a minute, we'll recognize some of the exceptional staff that we have in the district, and then we'll take a break. So, Mr. Toscano, please.
Good evening, it's wonderful to have everybody here tonight on such a special night. Tonight, we are honored to recognize our Teachers of the Year for each campus and for the district.
Start with you.
Great teachers are the soul of an enlightened society, and we entrust in them the most precious things we know in life, our children. Much of us owe much of who we are and what we've achieved to great teachers because of their fundamental commitment to our success. We can all name that great teacher who changed our lives or a teacher who inspired us. Tonight, we're honoring our Teachers of the Year, East Central's best of the best, who represent all the hard-working, dedicated, selfless educators across the district who strive to do more and be more for our children every day. We're so proud to honor you here because we know that you change lives every day and make the world a better place, one student at a time, and we thank you very much for With that, we're going to call people up. And we've got Mr. Garza first, so we're gonna call up... We're gonna go in order of board members, because our board members are going to greet the teacher from the campuses in their district. So, if Joe... Mr. Joseph McKelvey will come up from Heritage Middle School, he is the Teacher of the Year Next, if Ms. Virginia Kelsey will come up from Oak Crest. Ms. Kelsey is representing Oak Crest tonight as their Teacher of the Year, and she will also be recognized as a district nominee for the HEB Award of Excellence in Education.[1190.43][1190.43][applause] If I could have Mr. Fellers come down for his campuses.[1212.58][1212.58][laughter] If we could have Ms. Alyssa Newell come down from ECDC. She is representing ECDC as their Teacher of the Year.[1235.43][1235.43][applause] Thank you. Next, from Harmony Elementary School, Harmony's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Stacy Tupper.[1261.58][1261.58][applause] Thank you. Next, from BCLC, Teacher of the Year at BCLC, Tamara Dresmala.[1285.75][1285.75][applause] Thank you. Next up is Mr. Bryant. From John Glenn Elementary, their Teacher of the Year, Ms. Katie Dilla.[1322.43][1322.43][applause] Next is Mr. Mulkey. Mr. Mulkey, if you'll come down. And next, Teacher of the Year from Salado Intermediate, Melissa Stokes.[1397.75][1397.75][applause] Next, our Legacy Middle School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Janet Bush.[1426.12][1426.12][applause] Highland Forest Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jackie DeLuna.[1454.47][1454.47][applause] Ms. DeLuna will also be a district nominee for the HEB Award of Excellence in Education.[1468.12][1468.12][applause] Next, we have our Pecan Valley Elementary Teacher of the Year is Sarah Harrod.[1506.54][1506.54][applause] Sarah is also being recognized as the Elementary Teacher of the Year for the district.[1523.54][1523.54][applause] From East Central High School, Miriam George.[1558.62][1558.62][applause] Ms. George is also the District Teacher of the Year and is going to be representing I should've said that Ms. Harrod from Pecan Valley will be representing the district at Region 20 for the Region 20 Teacher of the Year, so...[1610.04][1610.04][applause] Will all the family members of our Teachers of the Year please stand up and be recognized as well? Thank you for being here tonight to support our teachers.[1624.54][1624.54][applause] Being a teacher takes a lot of long hours, and we know that if it weren't for our people at home holding down the fort, it would be impossible to do what we do in public education. So, we appreciate you family members just as much as we appreciate our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So, from all of us to all of you, thank you very much for what you do. It is your fault that our students succeed.[1665.12][1665.12][laughter] And it's one of the best things in the world. And we thank you for it.
You know, Ms. Colas said a while ago, the influence of the teachers lasts... I still remember my freshman algebra teacher and the influence he had on me. 1961, '62. Dean Nolan, never forgot his name. That's how much of a power he had over me. He taught me algebra and the love of the math. Never forgot the math. That's what the teachers do to you.[1708.25][1708.25][applause]
All right, thank you, everyone. We're gonna take about a 10-minute recess and let those of you who need to go home to grade papers or do homework head out the door. So, we'll convene at 7:10. We'll need the Cliff Notes version so that we can all go home. All right. Jenda, we have no one signed up for public comments. Item five, Superintendent's Report, a personnel report.
Trustees, this month's report of personnel activity is on page 10 in your electronic packet. Not a lot of activity last month. As always, if you have any questions or need additional information regarding any of the information in the March, February, March report, please let me know and be happy to provide that for you.
All right. Next, we have the Transportation Department update.
Sir, this time I'd like to call up our leadership for our Transportation Department, Mr. Ariz Mendez and Mr. Jerick, who will provide the board with a brief update on our Transportation Department goals and progress. Department goals and progress.
The presentation that I believe is behind you is also located on page 12 in your electronic packet if you want to follow along there.
All right, good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, Board of Trustees, community members, administrators. Thank you for our opportunity to go ahead and discuss our goals for this year. Thank you again to the board and our leadership across the District. With your support and funding, we were able to purchase six brand-new Thomas buses. There are 77 passenger buses, so we were able to fit many students in there. We've got eight additional camera systems for a total of, you know, 14 basically new camera systems for the District. This year, bless you. This year, we were able to budget out for employee uniforms for the first time, which has given our team a sense of professionalism and also is there for safety purposes too, for identification purposes. And we also, in an area to continue our training and retention of our drivers, our new drivers, we have an improved driver training curriculum that we did not have before in the past, and our trainers are doing a wonderful job getting new recruits and getting them trained and getting their license on the road.
Okay, we set a performance goal for transportation. Out of the 190 daily routes that we run, that we would run 98% of those on time, and each time that the route was running late, that we would communicate that to administrators and to the parents of the District. All that, maintaining also a 95% attendance rate for all DOT staff. As you can see, altogether, up to, from the beginning of school year till now, we've run over 21,000 routes, with 98.7% of those have been running on time. So, we're meeting our goal there, running our buses on time. Our attendance at this point is at 97% for all DOT staff, so we're meeting our goals there for attendance.
All right, in the area of culture, climate, one of the areas that we met, linked with a little bit at different times last year with Mr. Toscano during our meetings, was the area of our culture and climate and the retention and the morale of our staff. Part of that comes from the training and education. So, last year, we implemented systems to where we had an hour-and-a-half trainings on our half-days. This year, with the whole-day professional developments at the campus level, we budgeted out and funded for four-hour sessions, which has been beneficial. We have had District staff across the, or staff from across the District come in and help cross-train in the areas of, I know Nurse Jalen Hart, our District Nurse, came by and talked about dealing with students with seizures, and we did the AED device-type stuff. Chief Drinowski and Officer Mora stopped by at our last training, and we're trying to shore up some of our bus accident reporting type deals and make that more efficient. Kind of already talked about our uniforms. We've ordered lanyards and just the nice pins, whatever, for our drivers and our staff just to promote the culture, climate, and morale. We've got years-of-service pins, perfect attendance pins, and Employee of the Month pins. We've just also purchased three big boards for Employee of the Month, so instead of just honoring 12 people at our department, we have a lot of great people that do a fantastic job. So, we've got three different deals, one in the area of performance, one in the area of culture, climate, and one in the area of fiscal responsibility. So, we've got those in, actually today. Still honoring their birthdays by putting the magnets out there. We revamped our signage for our efforts to retain quality people. We have a perfect attendance parking spots now for nine weeks for the drivers who have received perfect attendance. We've also, our discipline numbers are up on our buses a little bit more too this year, so met with a group of drivers, also with some of the secondary administrators, and worked with our driver trainers to make sure that we're giving some campus lessons as well, which I worked with our training staff to complete along with Glenn. And we're pretty much just trying to keep in vertical alignment with our roles at the campus level of being safe, responsible, and respectful. We've had these signs made, thanks to Mr. McKay for letting us use your model there from the high school, and those are all prominently placed on our buses now for our students to see. Keeping with our quarterly potlucks, our girls having fun there at the Valentine's luncheon, and then over the summer, a big thank you to you guys again because we really had a lot of systemic changes from last year to this year, including big screen monitors for our route board, daily route boards for our fleet management boards, and the whole entire, we did a whole entire overhaul on the professional feel and look of our department. So, thank you guys for that. For our fiscal responsibility, last year, our goal was to come between, have a difference of no more than 3% from our beginning-of-the-year inventory to our end-of-the-year. I think we were off by a total of maybe 500 bucks for the whole entire year. As you see, we do have the stock inventory of, we're up to about $102,000 right now for our inventory. And just ways that we go ahead and we monitor that is we have quarterly budget reviews where we kind of checks and balance, a good checks and balance system. We also use our Service Finder with Fidelity, that's kind of like our aware system at the campus level, has all of our data for all of our buses and maintenance and stuff like that. We've also gone through a more rigorous pre-trip, post-trip inspection from our drivers. That's the expectation that they submit at the end of every week to make sure that they're, making sure that they're performing those inspections so that we hopefully catch minor problems before they become big problems. And then we also have a work order spreadsheet this year that we utilized with the help of Verna, our inventory clerk, and John Ure is our fantastic shop foreman. We've all worked together, so we're tracking for the first time how long it's taking at different points in the process, from start to finish and everything in between. So, it's been good data to use for our department.
Okay, let me touch a little bit on our BOSS survey. Normally, we just have the administrators at the campus, you know, survey and give us scores based on our performances. We've opened that up to the other auxiliary leadership and just so we can get a better spectrum, a wider spectrum of, you know, how we are performing. This school year, with those additional scores, we're maintaining within proficiency. We have a 4.4, 4.2 is our lowest score in communication, so there's a lot of room for improvement, we know that, and, you know, we're satisfied with these scores for this time right now. Community involvement, now that's something Transportation, we look forward to. This school year and the last couple of years, we've been involved with Stuff the Bus and been represented at these HEB, talking to community members out there, trying to recruit bus drivers, having some success there. But it's important that we show that, you know, we care and we're there to, you know, show East Central in a good light. We have quarterly blood drives at the Transportation Department, and we had one this morning. And then, we were involved with the health fair at the high school. And also gives us a great opportunity to recruit within our community, you know, and let them know we do need quality bus drivers. All right, moving forward. With the new school boundaries, tradition opening up next school year, gives us a great opportunity to look at all our routes and see what we need to do to be more efficient. You know, that also affects some of the other elementaries and, you know, and bell schedules and such, so we're actively looking at that right now, see where we can improve, looking at growth in the District, so where we need to place routes to absorb that growth and plan ahead. And then, at this point, we're also developing a search tool similar to the bus lookup that we have on our District website right now, where parents can look up bus information. This other tool, we're gonna design as to answer school attendance questions. So, we're developing that, hopefully in the next couple of weeks we'll have that developed, and we can release that with, you know, information so the community and schools can look that information up themselves. And as far as summer school, we're planning, working ahead right now with that, with Meredith Rokus and trying to design routes, stops where we need to move some stops with some of the new growth that we have and staffing there. And technology, we're right now piloting a system with Senovia, and it has GPS-based system, so we're tracking buses, just, it's a small amount, we're piloting right now on five buses, but it's something that we see beneficial and increases, enhances safety and performance for our department.
All right, and then just to kind of follow up, other moving forwards, as you can see, we're pretty busy this spring, but we've also been meeting with Mr. Selby, Ms. Gonzalez, planning for Base 2, which will be the, you go right there by tradition, planning for the number of buses and drivers and all that good stuff that's gonna go with that, the office building too. We'll be meeting briefly with Ms. Burns, our Chief Financial Officer, talking about budget for next year. And also, in an attempt to continue growing our own, we were really excited last year to work with Amanda Holman at the high school and get two summer interns. They had a, they did a fantastic job for us, and it was good to be around the kids every day again. I kind of miss some of that sometimes, at times, but, so we've got interviews for two more for this summer, looking to continue growing our own. That is pretty much all that we have, so thank you guys for the opportunity. Anybody else have any questions?
Let me ask you a question. You have an incentive for perfect attendance? Do you have a high rate of drivers that don't come in?
Actually, this year, our, you know, our attendance goal, our attendance goal was, we're at like 97%, 97% right now. So, our attendance this year has been really fantastic, and honestly, it was really, really good until the flu bug hit, you know, and that's just kind of to come to be expected, so, but.
So, when a driver's out, how do we fill in for that driver?
Well, we're blessed this year to have more sub-drivers than what we did last year. So, we have a couple of people that are there on standby, certain, sometimes other people might have to double up on some routes. So, Glenn has done a very, very good job of kind of educating me as I'm coming along in this process to how to create roster flexibility at times, and so we've been able to kind of fill in like that.
And so, those subs would know every route?
Yes, sir, every sub, the pop, in the morning or whatever, when Trish gets here at 5 o'clock in the morning, you know, she'll know who, we already have the route board already set up for the next day. So, of course, it's gonna be sometimes call-ins or anything else, so through the use of our Route Finder that we use, that it's computer-generated routes, we all, so they have an actual map, they have a right-left turn sheet as well, and for those, you know, every once in a while, you're gonna have sometimes that a driver might not know that route, so what we do in an attempt for that, to help them, is provide them with a monitor so that they can assist their team.
Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
And a custodial department update?
Mr. Lawrence? Come on down.
Hello, members of the board. District leadership.
Mr. Lawrence's custodial update presentation, you'll be able to find that on page 21 in your electronic packet if you want to follow along there.
So, I'm Joe Lawrence, I'm the custodial coordinator for the District. At the beginning of the school year, our department set in place some goals, you know, for us for this school year, which is almost over, it's flown by. So, everyone knows, you know, first impressions are lasting impressions, usually the first impression that you get of something is what's gonna stick, and it takes a lot to change that. So, in saying that, our department has a mission, and our mission is to provide an exceptional, clean learning and working environment every day. That's, you know, for children, that's for the kids, that's for staff, that's for parents, that's even for visitors to our District. We employ over 75 custodians district-wide, and every day, we strive to be productive, you know, that's making use of all the resources that we have, using them in their intended purpose, and using our daily shift as wisely as possible, every minute that we have, to get the job that we have accomplished every day. We strive to be customer service-oriented. That's every aspect of custodial, you know, customer service. You know, we just don't clean our campuses. You know, we provide a service to the administrative staff, we provide a service for the kids, we provide a service for parents and all visitors to our District. And we, you know, what we do, we support the staff, we administer an environment for the kids, that's extremely important, and we take our mission statement very important because, you know, educating students and future, for the future and success, you know, of our leaders. We had three areas that we created goals in, that, first area is performance, and per the mission statement, the first thing that we wanted to do is be customer-focused, provide services, provide a clean, safe, and healthy environment for all those that are in the District. We had a goal to increase the recurring coaching visits with the custodial staff, so that means staying engaged with the head custodians, staying engaged with the staff, being available to whenever any coaching, you know, opportunities came up. We all wanted to also have, keep up with the cleaning and safely, the safety inspections monthly. On the District level, with me doing spot, you know, cleaning inspections of the campuses as well as the head custodians doing their monthly cleaning inspections of the campus as well as the safety inspections, making sure that they're identifying any safety hazards and reporting them as soon as possible. Addressing staffing needs, so always doing job fairs, always trying to keep our staffing at 100%, you know, or as much as possible that we can do. Resources, providing all the resources that our custodians need to accomplish their jobs on a daily basis. Training to staff, so providing training to new hires, continual training for the custodians that we already have. Reviewing expectations, so making all new staff aware of our department and District expectations. Always continuing to review with our current, you know, custodians of what our District and our campus and department expectations are, and reviewing those to make sure that we're staying current, you know, with expectations. You know, providing transparency and breakthrough schedules. Increasing communication and collaboration with other departments, including in energy management, working with Julio, you know, when we know that we have events outside of normal school hours and those things. The second area is culture and climate, so enhancing the custodial frontline leadership. So, that's developing our head custodians on the campus level, you know, creating better leaders, you know, at the campus level, empowering them, and making them stronger. I do monthly newsletters that I review with the head custodians at a monthly head custodial meeting that we have, and they take that information back to the campus and they go over that with their staff. We wanted to start doing scenario-based training with our leaders, you know, every month, so doing case study reviews, having open discussion, group discussions, you know, with our head custodians, getting them engaged with different, you know, leadership skills that they need to develop, that all of us need to develop. The reduction in number of cleaning deficiencies, so that just goes along with the leadership, that goes along with expectations, creating cleaning protocols and keeping up with cleaning protocols so that we can cut down on the cleaning deficiencies. Staff turnover, turnover, that's reducing staff turnover, that's retaining employees for a long term. We want to, we wanted to make our head custodians realize that they are safety ambassadors at their campuses, you know. They are an integral part in identifying any safety hazards that may be, any tripping, any electrical hazards. You know, the adage is, you know, if you see something, say something. You know, if you see a safety concern, be proactive about it, report it. Make sure that we're, they're not only making sure that the custodial department is safe, but anybody who enters onto that campus is safe. And we wanted to reduce workers' comp claims. We, our goal was to encourage our head custodians to, encourage their staff to use safe practices, so using the products and the equipment in their intended purpose, not cutting corners in a way just to try to make the job shorter. And using PPEs, that's personal protective equipment. When something is called and you need that personal protective equipment, making sure that you're using it in its intended purpose. Third area was fiscal responsibility. So, we want to, wanted to be able to return 3% of the allocated funds in the budget. We planned on doing that by focusing on preventative maintenance. That is taking care of equipment, that any equipment that we may have that is oil or gas-powered, that we're making sure that we're always checking fluid levels so that we can get the entire life expectancy out of any equipment that we have in the District. By doing this, we can expand the life of the equipment and we can reduce repair costs. Maintaining productivity, so that's just being productive with the equipment and the chemicals. Maintaining productivity, so, uh, that's just, uh, being productive with the equipment and the chemicals and our time that we have. Keeping track of the equipment warranties. Okay, it's not showing it here, but that's okay. So, keeping track of the equipment warranties, taking advantage of when these, uh, pieces of equipment are in, under warranty and making sure that we are getting them serviced. Uh, so that we can cut down on the cost of repairs. Politing systems, so that's polishing of chemicals, that's different products, equipment and supplies, to making sure that we are using the most cost-effective means that we have. Uh, so that's going out and, uh, meeting with other vendors to see what they have to offer so that we, uh, are, are saving as much money as we can, but also providing quality products, uh, for our staff to clean and disinfect. So, the update, so how has our progress, uh, gone since, uh, the beginning of the school year? So, we've increased visibility, uh, coaching meetings, transparency, uh, recurring onsite, uh, presence. Um, I'm at a, a, a daily, I'm, daily, I'm at some campus, you may see me, I don't maybe get to speak to a lot of you on a daily basis, but I, I, I wanna make sure that my presence is seen, you know, at each campus, you know, that you can reach out to custodial whenever, when, whenever you need me, you know, I, I, I'm open. Uh, we've also created a partnership with Germ Blast, they're an infection control company, they do high-level disinfecting. They have serviced the district twice on, uh, two, they've done two scheduled calls as well as two call-in visits. The, on their first round of, uh, disinfecting, they service all of our fleet vehicles. Um, our fleet vehicles are pretty much the first contact that kids have, you know, with the district in the mornings, you know, they get on that bus, so if we have uh, a, a child who is sick and who can't trans, uh, port any germs, that's the first place that they come into contact with the district, with the kids, with bus drivers. So, uh, Germ Blast hit every bus, every transportation vehicle that we have as well as every campus and every auxiliary building in the district as well as, uh, central office. If you go to any campus, uh, on the main entrance, you will see a Germ Pla- Germ Blast sticker, that's a placard letting, uh, everyone know that we are a, uh, have partnered with them and that they are servicing our district. Um, their services are in addition to what we do, they are not a substitution for us, that means we, we still can't slack off, we still disinfect, we still clean on our regular schedule, they're just an, an, uh, an addition that we use, uh, to make sure that we're, uh, being vigilant and combating, you know, uh, the spread of any infectious, uh, bacteria. Uh, we have purchased a second eMist machine, uh, I spoke with, uh, the board last year about the eMist machine that we have. It's an electrostatic machine that, uh, we rotate throughout the campuses, um, we, it, it does, uh, electro, uh, static disinfection and it sticks to those touch points, uh, creating a, a lasting, uh, germicidal effect. It's, uh, a little more effective than just, than just wiping, uh, surfaces down, so it's, uh, very instrumental in what we do, well, how we disinfect, uh, these touch points in these schools. We also, uh, have the opportunity to rotate it, uh, throughout different departments, so if, uh, transportation was in need of it, uh, they could use that. Uh, if the maintenance facility, police department were to need that, we can also, you know, service those areas, not just our campuses. Uh, staffing and training, so, uh, we've, we've strived to sustain our, uh, custodial substitute pool. We wanted to, to make sure that we fill any vacancies and any short-term absences that we have on our campuses. Uh, we continue to work with safe schools, uh, web-based, you know, uh, training that we do. Uh, we have a, we have come up with a designated training site for our new hires, for our new Orientees, it's our, our south campus. That, uh, when they first start, they go to south campus, they are introduced to classrooms, how to properly clean a classroom, restroom, how to properly clean a restroom, hallways, locker rooms, every aspect that they would, uh, find throughout it, the whole district is there at south campus and, and they can get that training before they're even introduced to a school and have to work on their own. So, we have, uh, gap time assignments that we have created, those gap time assignments are, are, uh, assignments and things that the staff will do before they can get into a classroom and clean. Our custodians come in at two o'clock in the afternoon, school is still in session, they can't get into classrooms at the time. Well, what do we do with that time that we have, we wanna make sure, uh, that we're using that time wis- wisely, that's being productive. Uh, so, we have the, uh, gap time schedules, schedules so, uh, that they can, uh, also complete tasks that don't involve having to be in the classroom. Culture and climate. Uh, so, we've expanded our communication platforms, we have monthly meetings, uh, with, uh, the, the campus and admin and, uh, also plans to have those meetings, just little power meetings, meetings, uh, about maybe fifteen-minute longs where we can talk about, you know, just pertinent information only. You know, if I could, uh, I'm gonna s- reach out to all the secretaries and, and set up, you know, fifteen-minute monthly meetings with all the, uh, onsite supervisors, the principals. You know, so we can go over just pertinent information, uh, making sure that the lines of communication are always open, uh, between custodial and the campuses. So, uh, Google site meetings, agendas, info and notes, they're all available online, uh, so notes from all, uh, meetings are, are taken and those notes are online to be, uh, reviewed later if need be. Uh, campus event planning, uh, so that's very important, so we wanna be proactive versus reactive when we have events that are, are planned for the future. So, we, we wanna, uh, Elaine, our, uh, custodial or facilities management secretary, uh, sends out the emails, uh, with, uh, the events ahead of time so that we can, uh, have everything in place before time and, and we can, uh, have time to even come up with any questions that we may have and, or any changes versus having to, on the spot when the event is happening, have to come up with the solution. Uh, case study leadership, you know, growth during our head custodial meetings, uh, Mrs. Cavassos has been great, uh, assisting me in, uh, you know, finding case studies. Finding different leadership scenarios that we work with, with our head custodians, you know, during these meetings to develop them more as, uh, leaders onsite at the different campuses. Uh, reduction in the, uh, workers' comp claims, uh, that's a, a, a big part, you know, of the culture and climate that we have. You know, um, I can't pick that slide up, but over the past three years, uh, we've actually reduced our, uh, workers' comp claim by eighty-four percent. You know, that's actually, you know, that's actually a good number. The next area is fiscal responsibility, so we're on target right now to return three percent of the, uh, at a minimum of the unused funding. Uh, we continue to care for our equipment and we're on, on, on target with our replacement cycles, uh, that we have set in place for this equipment. Uh, we, we're using, uh, cooperative vendors to make sure that we get competitive pricing. And we always, uh, we continue to be evaluating, you know, uh, the value of supplies. We're making sure that we're using the equipment warranties, we're taking advantage of those warranties, uh, that we have for the equipment, uh, if ever it comes up to, uh, need repair. Uh, we are also piloting some chemical product programs, uh, through, uh, Hilliard at our high school. Our high school now has all Hilliard products, uh, they also provide a, um, monitoring and managing program that we're taking advantage of. EcoLab is another, uh, company that we will be piloting at one of our middle schools and our Highland Forest Elementary School. Uh, the scoreboard, so transparency, so we had set a goal to record, uh, we record the number of inspections and follow-up meetings and he- uh, with the head custodians and, uh, admin staff. We'd made a goal of twenty-five per week, we actually exceeded that and we're on an average of about fifty-one per week, uh, that we, uh, do. So, the custodial survey. Uh, bid, uh, custodial, the custodial departments are received favorable responses in eighty-four to eighty-eight percent of, uh, all areas regarding communication, cooperation and active listening, uh, responses. Uh, in the services department, we got a sixty-six point five percent, uh, so there's room for improvement, so we have an opportunity, opportunity for growth there. And, uh, hiring staff, we've expanded our job recruitment to indeed, it's an online website that we use and we also do job fairs. You know, our, uh, district job fair as well as we've participated in the Goodwill Job Fair, uh, so, we have opportunities for improvement. So, uh, in the survey, we see that, uh, in the services aspect, that there, there, there's something that we can definitely, you know, improve on the quality of service that we provide, you know, on a, a campus level and we will strive to improve on that part. So, what's, uh, a look ahead, looking forward? We will continue to, uh, have the campus and department event, uh, proactive planning, uh, communication with our leadership. Uh, that's our custodians on a, head custodians on a campus, uh, level. We have a leadership buddy system where they can network with each other, they can learn from each other. Continue to have a, uh, cleaning and disinfecting protocols and, and, and use our best practices for, uh, everything. We're, uh, have a, a standardized district-wide expectations, schedules and cleaning protocols that if we have anyone new, they, they can come and just get plugged right in because we have, you know, simplified but thorough, uh, cleaning protocols and instructions set forward for them. Uh, continued visibility on the campuses, uh, continue to work with Germ Blast, they're scheduled to service our camp, uh, our district twice a year. Uh, staffing and training, we're gonna, uh, you know, new hires, uh, onsite training, we have web-based training as well as we do onsite training. And then, uh, frontline supervision, you know, continue to develop our, uh, head custodians to become better leadership, uh, on the campus. And, uh, reviewing and planning for the upcoming new elementary school for, uh, staffing as well as, uh, all the sites that we have renovation and additions on. And, uh, that is it, but I have, does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, I would just like to say thank you for what y'all do for the district, the custodial department, y'all do amazing work for the schools, the teachers, the administration, y'all are unsung heroes, y'all most of the time go unnoticed every time. After events, everybody I see's always got smiling faces, so I'd just like to say I appreciate what y'all do for this district, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So, those were two great reports from two of the departments that are the first things that some people see. You walk into the building and the first thing you see is the cleanliness of the building or the grounds. Most of the time, the first person that our students are in contact with in the morning is our transportation department. So, whether you, whether you realize it or not, you have a tremendous impact on the learning opportunities for our kids, so thank you for what you do, I'll echo Mr. Massagel's comments. All right, item D, construction update.
Mr. Toscano, President Bryant, board members, I'm here for another reading update to the pro- bond program this, uh, this month. And, uh, I will go through, a lot of this is very similar to what we've gone through before, I'm just gonna give you kind of highlights some of the changes that have taken place. This is back in February, you'll see barely because it's not a great photo, on the right side is wing, is segment C and has uh, basically just the, the metal framing going up, but by this month, they've already clo- started to close that in, putting in, uh, 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 weatherproofing, uh, membrane on the exterior, uh, they have masonry starting to go up as well. So, it, there has been, uh, quite a bit of progress made. Uh, just to give you a little bit more close-up, this is, uh, segment, or section A, the gym and cafeteria. And once again, masonry has, uh, been completed in most areas, they have the, the waterproofing up on the exterior. The very front entrance, which is section B, has the, uh, uh, the beginning of the, uh, the canopy that's gonna go in the front uh, and, uh, is, is taking shape quite a bit. Uh, wing C is the, uh, far, uh, is the area where you're gonna have Kinder in first grade. And once again, it, it's, uh, making great progress and wing D is probably the furthest along, have most of your masonry or all of your masonry up and they will begin putting up metal, uh, siding and already have some of the metal siding up there. At the, uh, Center for the Performing Arts, uh, you have a whole lot of steel going up and, uh, in February, beginning to have some of the exterior, uh, waterproofing and on the backside, some of the brick. And this, uh, this month, you'll see a lot more of the steel beginning to have already been put in and they're beginning to close in the, uh, building envelope and, uh, making very good progress, the roofing's, uh, just about completed on that and within the, uh, by April, they should be, uh, dried in and be, and moving forward on in- interior, uh, the construction as well. This is just from the east side, not a whole, uh, you can see that it's a lot more activity taking place on the exterior. Salado, uh, this is the north addition, uh, by this time, they had started in closing, putting the, uh, exterior, uh, envelope up and now they've completed the waterproofing and, uh, we are not gonna paint it blue, or at least, uh, so I just wanna make sure, Ms. Trianne, I thought we were, but we're not. On the south, uh, south addition, uh, off of the gym, once again, we've, uh, enclosed all the exterior, uh, but now you have the wa- waterproofing, uh, pretty much everything but the windows are in on the exterior. The next phase will be to begin putting the, the metal paneling and any masonry up on the exterior walls. The interior walls are already, uh, framed on both sections and beginning to get finished out. The roof is, uh, also completed on both, both sections.
Jim, I'm pretty colorblind, but that didn't look like the right color for that school.
Oh, well, Patriots have blue, I mean, it's a. Harmony, uh, Harmony is quite a, uh, quite a ways along, uh, this is back in, in February and in March, you have, uh, the mason is, is just about complete, uh, on the exterior masonry, uh, the, all the waterproofing's done, the roofing's completed. The interior is, is just about finished out as far as the, uh, uh, drywall and so they're, they're, uh, looking at turning this over to us by the beginning of June. Uh, the, uh, Salado project probably won't get turned over to the beginning of July, uh, and, uh, but it's, it's moved along well. Con Valley, once again, you had some exterior wall, uh, or envelope, uh, being put up, uh, you had the roofing being to be put in. You have the roof completed, the, uh, uh, weather, uh, waterproofing has been installed, uh, they'll begin installing, uh, any masonry and, uh, uh, metal, uh, paneling, uh, actually, they've already started doing some of that. Interior is already framed out and beginning to have drywall ins- in, uh, installed. Con Valley will get turned over to us probably in the first part of ga- July. Sinclair Project, uh, quite a ways along also, even in February, but in March, we have the waterproofing, the glass is going in. Uh, you can see rooftop units already have been put in place on the roof, the roof is complete. Uh, you don't see it, but on the other side of this, they already have the mason starting to put up, uh, brick, uh, where it's called for and metal paneling is, I believe, has been delivered and is beginning to be, will be beginning to go up as well. Sinclair will get turned over to us probably the beginning of, of June. Uh, Tradition Elementary School, I think, will be completed, they're saying by, uh, the end of June, it probably will bleed into July, I suspect, but that's what they're telling us. And, uh, the PAC, probably, they're saying by the middle of, uh, July, I suspect it'll be the end of July, closer to August, my own personal feeling. John Glenn Annex, we're still in, uh, program, uh, de- design phase and we'll continue to work on that. And, uh, ECD, DC, we are, have not really begun that, uh, design, our programming design yet, but we will once we complete, uh, John Glenn. And that's the end of the, the, uh, stirring, uh, presentation. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer for you.
Do I have any questions? You've, you've painted a fairly rosy picture for us.
Well, right now, uh, yeah, you can see, half of the projects are pretty rosy, the other half are rosier than they were, but I'm not going to, to tell you the. half are rosier than they were, but I'm not going to, to tell you that they'll, will be in all of these in June, it'll be ju- different phases. And even at Tradition, the plan is to go in and occupy, as soon as they finish an area, we'll punch it out and begin putting furniture in there and so forth.
Okay.
So the plan is to have that occupied, uh, certainly by July. And that way, give everybody time to set up everything and have, uh, the teachers have some time in there so that they aren't rushing like they often have had to do.
And all of our, um, partners are on board with these schedules?
Uh, the, the schedules I'm giving you are the ones they've given us and the ones I've said I think will be in is the one I believe is accurate, when I, my own version, where I said they would, said they'll turn it over since June and I said July.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just telling you what I think will happen.
Right, that's probably why we keep you around, I think, so...
Hope for good reason.
If we listen, if we listen to them, we still wouldn't be in some of our buildings. So we appreciate your efforts and keep, keep pushing them to get through.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. All right, uh, E, item E, upcoming events.
Trustees, take, take a quick look at our March and April calendar in your miscellaneous packet. Uh, wanted to point to a couple of, uh, events, uh, dates on those two months' calendars. Um, this Saturday, the twenty-fourth, from five to midnight, um, for those of you who are able to attend, uh, the Sarah Streis Scholarship Fundraiser Event will be held in Laverneya Chamber of Commerce, again, from five PM to midnight on the twenty-fourth this Saturday. Um, that, that of course is, uh, an event that raise fun, raises funds for scholarships, many of which go to East Central High School graduates. Um, and so it, it's, it's a community event that goes right back to our community. On the thirtieth, uh, Friday, we have a school holiday. School will be closed on that day. In April, on the seventh, hard to believe, but this year's EC Foundation Gala at the Florville, Florsville's Event Center, uh, will be held on the seventh, the evening of the seventh. On the ninth is a student holiday, staff will be, uh, at work, uh, training. Uh, on the eleventh, we have a special board meeting, it's a goal-setting workshop, uh, beginning at five-thirty and dinner will be provided. Uh, again, that's on the eleventh. And then your next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on the nineteenth. Lastly, Ballow Flowers, uh, holiday is on the twenty-seventh of April.
Okay, um, if the board will indulge me, we've had a little miscommunications in our public comments, and we have one group who actually wanted to speak tonight, didn't get the sign-up sheet signed, so we're gonna go ahead and allow them to speak at this time. So, uh, please come up. You have, uh, you, you'll have five minutes to address the board. Uh, since your topic is not on our agenda, there won't be any interaction with the board.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you ma'am.
Um, yes, hi, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Uh, my name is Eva. My son Joshua is, was, I'm sorry, a kindergarten student at Harmony Elementary in Ms. Erica Barrera's class. So I don't know if it's come to your attention, but there has been, um, an issue with her, there was, um, she was basically let go. And we are here in her support, we have letters galore, we have a lot of parents that are very outraged at the situation. We did not know what was going on for more than a month. I actually personally called, um, your office, Mr. Toscano, and I spoke to, I believe, your secretary. And I told her that I've been trying to get in every day. I am actually in the PTA, but it has nothing to do with it, so I am there every day. I've asked to speak to one of the administrators and basically it took me having to call district for someone to actually acknowledge us and to give us, just, basically, they said that she was not gonna be the teacher anymore and that we had a new teacher. And I understand that there's criterias that we're not allowed to know, the, the investigation or what have you. But also, a lot of us parents are volunteers, so we know the situation, we know what happened, we know the aggressive child that was involved. So we want to be here on behalf of Ms. Barrera to ask if we could have a meeting somehow because we, she's been in this district twenty years, twenty years of her life she's been here. So the fact that, that happened and now her name is just slandered. Everybody is talking about her in the entire campus. And this is my first year, my son is only in kinder, so I'm very abrasive to the fact that he is, he was scared, he was crying, he doesn't know why Ms. Barrera was there, and we have an aggressive child still in the classroom. Nothing has been done, the only thing that has been done was Ms. Barrera was fired. So I, we have an, we need answers, we don't have any answers, we have billions of questions, we just wanna be able to see if there's a way that we could help. Maybe we could, we have, like I said, we have letters, we have so many things that we've seen in the classroom for Ms. Barrera. And not only that, the fact that a lot of the teachers have aggressive students and they're not being told about this, I think there's a class specifically that they need to take to be able to handle these aggressive children. Ms. Barrera did not take it, but also she was not known to take this class. So when the incident occurred, she was basically let go immediately because of the way she handled this aggressive child, which my son was hit consistently with backpacks. He was seen, you know, things thrown all over the place, there was chairs being thrown, there was kids, actually, some of the parents here, their kids were slapped in the face by this child. And yet Ms. Barrera was, the only thing she was doing was keeping our children safe. And as a parent, that is my number one concern. And I appreciate the fact that she did that, but everything that happened has been awful, we are just incredibly saddened. And I just, we just want answers and also we want a way to be able to help Ms. Barrera. She's not working. Like I said, her name is slandered. Where's she gonna work? She's been here twenty years and I feel like she has done everything she can and nobody helped her. To my knowledge, principal, assistant principal, administrator, nobody spoke for her. Nobody, not one person. And I wish we would've known, 'cause I'm sure there would've been way more than us there to speak on her behalf. So, uh, that, that's what we're here for, we wanna see if there could be a meeting held just the parents of Ms. Barrera's class at Harmony Elementary so that we could speak what we know about the situation and also to be able to help her somehow. And also to see if you guys could implement that, I guess, the course or whatever needs to be done for other teachers. There, the teacher we have now, her name is Ms. Lopez, when I was there volunteering that day, the student was starting to throw backpacks. I told her, "Everybody, let's just get out." And she just looked at me, she said, "No, no, no, he's fine." I said, "We know him." Then he started throwing it, a chair, which almost hit my son. So of course, being a parent, I said, "Just come out." So literally, I told her, she didn't know this, I said, "Everybody get out, shut the door," and we called administration. And she said, "Well, I, I'll just scoot him out." I said, "No, because if you touch him, if you haven't had this course," she didn't even know about the course. I said, "You could get fired." And you just, she just graduated in December. So there's no way, I had to tell her this, which makes me think, well, these teachers don't know about this course that they need to take or this action that needs to be done when a child that aggressive is in the class. So what's gonna happen is something, she's gonna forget, she hasn't had the course, she will probably try and, you know, maybe push this child out and then she will be done with her career when she just graduated in December. So I appreciate your time, I really do, and I don't wanna sound aggressive myself, but I really feel like we need to implement changes, not only with the school but with the teachers, she just graduated. So I'd hate for her to be involved in this kind of situation and for her to be let go because of something that happened. And I also, we, we do wanna speak in Ms. Barrera's behalf, so thank you so much, I will call your office and maybe we could arrange that as soon as possible. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you ma'am. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, agenda item six, our action agenda. We have, uh, item A, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district calendar.
Ms. Hertz, if you could take just a minute to brief the board on the highlights of the eighteen-nineteen calendar?
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, and members of the board. Um, you will notice when you look at the calendar, it is very, very similar to this year's calendar. Um, we would, will start, uh, school on the fourth Monday of August, we end school at the end of the first week of June. All of the typical holidays are on there, very similar to what we have done this year. Um, we do have one difference. Um, this year, we had seventeen staff development days, which was an increase over previous years, and a hundred and seventy instructional days. After getting input from campus leadership, we have decided to take one of those staff development days, reduce it down to sixteen, and increase instructional days to one seventy-one. The day that we have decided to put back as an instructional day is in April. Um, we just felt like we needed a little more instructional time during that time of the year. So that's really the only real difference between this year's calendar and the one that we're proposing. For next year, it does meet all of the required minutes as far as the state is concerned. If you'll recall, last month, you did approve the staff development waiver. We actually do meet the minutes without the waiver, but we did wanna have that just as a little cushion in case anything came up and we, we needed some extra minutes in there to use. So I would be able, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Looks like we're good.
Okay.
Thank you ma'am. Yes, sir.
Trustees, I recommend, recommend board approval of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district calendar as presented.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district calendar as presented. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions, comments? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item two, item B, proposals for furniture and equipment for the two thousand sixteen bond projects.
Trustees, you'll have several documents in your miscellaneous packet for this item. Um, you may wanna take a look at with me. Mr. Morgan, Director of Purchasing, uh, put out an RFP for furniture and equipment for the bond projects. Um, these would be furniture to outfit, uh, the new facilities at Tradition, uh, the additions and renovations at Pecan Valley, uh, Harmony, Sinclair, uh, as well as, uh, although not part of the bond program, uh, with the board's decision to reconfigure Oak Crest for next year to become a pre-K to five campus from a four to five campus. Um, we need to look at some, some smaller furniture to accommodate the younger-aged children in that facility as well. And, uh, so in your packet, you'll see a tabulation sheet. Um, and on that bid tabulation sheet, I just wanna point, uh, to a couple of things, and of course, Mr. Morgan, at any point, uh, that you need to bridge any gaps here, feel free to do so. Um, you'll see the companies that we received, uh, bids from, and you'll notice, uh, if, if you look immediately, that most of the, of the companies that submitted bids were The primary reason most of these were incomplete is because one of the companies, Indico, is a manufacturer, uh, of school furniture, and most of the other companies on that list sell Indico furniture, so they were unable to compete, um, with the cost of the Indico That being said, uh, Indico did come in with a complete, uh, bid for both the library and the base bid. Um, they did present the best value after bids were tabulated. Uh, we did, uh, uh, try, sample, uh, many of the furniture items that we are looking at, uh, at different facilities throughout the district, let teachers use them this year to see what kind of quality and, uh, you know, if they appealed to the, the teachers and students. So, so Indico would be our recommendation for your consideration. And then secondly, JR Incorporated is a, a company that, uh, um, happens to have a product that Indico, uh, does not. Um, I believe it's...
Verco.
Verco. Um, we believe that by the board considering, uh, adopting pricing from two different companies allows us to keep both companies, uh, competitive. Um, and it also allows us to take advantage of a product that JR Incorporated has available, uh, that is a little bit better value than a comparable product that Indico has. I think collectively gives the district the opportunity to get the best value for quality products, and it doesn't, uh, put us in a position to rely on just one, uh, furniture provider. It gives us the ability to have another option should something happen. What you would be considering today is not necessarily the cost of the number of furniture items, uh, but the pricing for each individual furniture item. And for both Indico and JR Incorporated in your packet, you'll have a list of all of the different items, uh, that we've identified in our specifications and the cost of those items from each of those vendors. Again, the majority of these are gonna be a better value through Indico. And the Verco product from JR, uh, is something that we would also like to consider to kinda fill those gaps in the Indico products. Again, what you're considering today is the, is the unit price. Mr. Morgan?
Uh, also, this menu of pricing will be locked in for two years, uh, which will take us through all the renovations and additions, uh, for the two thousand sixteen bond. So essentially, it's locking us, locking it in for two years.
Locking in the, the cost of these items?
Correct. Uh, and what we did is we took, uh, the base amount of units for Tradition Elementary and gave estimates for, uh, the other renovation and addition projects, uh, so that they would, uh, take that in consideration and, and really give us the best value that they could.
Anyone have any questions?
Uh, I see a lot of it is lifetime warranty.
So, Indico, uh, sell, uh, Indico, uh, offers a, a limited lifetime, uh, besides vandalism, uh, Verco products offer a ten-year warranty.
So I mean, that's, I guess, that's where we're getting the, the best bang for our buck.
Yes, sir.
Lifetime warranty stuff.
Actually, uh...
Everybody's not vandalized, like you said, so...
Correct, actually, we, uh, visited one of the schools in Alamo Heights, uh, and the rep didn't realize it, uh, he's a, a little bit younger, uh, but their furniture, that furniture's been there since the late seventies and is still in use.
Cool.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President, I recommend the board select the pricing proposals of Indico Sales Incorporated and JR Incorporated to provide and install the furniture and equipment for the following projects within the two thousand sixteen bond program. Tradition Elementary, Pecan Valley Elementary, Gary Patterson Performing Arts Center. In addition, staff recommends the pricing proposals for Oak Crest Elementary, which is not part of the two thousand sixteen bond program and authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contract with these selected vendors for the projects on which each provided the best value to the district as presented.
Thank you, sir. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the pricing proposals of Indico Sales Incorporated and JR Incorporated to provide furniture for the district.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Feller, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, consider and take possible action to adopt a resolution authorizing the conveyance of an electric transmission line easement consisting of approximately two-point-five-one-one acres of the property and a temporary construction easement located at thirteen-seven-ninety-two Dunlop Road, Elmdorf, Texas, seven-eight-one-one-two, to City Public Service and authorizing the board president to sign documents required for the conveyance.
Trustees, the district was approached by City Public Service, um, sometime around six months ago, um, with the, this particular interest. Um, if you would, uh, look with me in your electronic packet on page thirty-five, I'll do my best to kinda get you oriented. Um, what, what we're talking about is the hundred-and-twenty-three acre property, catty-corner to EC DC on Dunlop Road. And, uh, if you're looking, uh, along with me, you'll see, uh, several lab, labeled areas of the property. And what I'm gonna try to highlight to you is that their first, uh, when they first approached us, um, you can see some dotted lines there, kinda parallel lines, kinda going across the property above the red lines. Initially, they wanted to run that electric easement along that pathway. Now, the issue with that was that it was in one, at one point, almost three hundred feet away from the railroad tracks into our property. Um, our request was that they revisit that, um, and that they consider going along our property line when they crossed, uh, Dunlop Road, get as close to the railroad tracks as possible and then run parallel to the, to the railroad tracks, uh, for the purpose of not encroaching on as much property. The issue that they were having was that the Railroad Commission has some stip, very specific criteria, um, and the, and, and the criteria is they can't come within seventy-five feet. So in looking at it, they were able to, to accomplish that, um, and accomplish what we were asking them to do. So, um, what you'll see there in red is the electric easement that they are requesting. Um, what you'll also see in red are... Um, what you'll also see in red, um, are several temporary construction easements. All in total, it's about two point three acres. Um, however, when they're done with this program, um, all of the temporary construction easem, easement areas will be returned back to the condition that the property was in prior to their work and will be turned back over to the district. Um, and the only area that we would not have the ability to construct on would be just where the overhead, uh, utilities and other utilities would be, uh, which is seventy-five feet wide, uh, seventy-five feet into our property, um, along the railroad tracks at the south end of that, of that property. And so, to kind of give you, um, another look at why we requested that, um, if you look at the one pager, it's East Central ISD High School Site Study, uh, hundred and twenty-three acres, a little bit small print, uh, but the boards, many years ago, uh, in two thousand and seven, um, had a site plan done on that property to see where could new school facilities be placed on that property, uh, appropriately. And what you'll see on that site plan is what could be a future high school and what also could be on the southwest corner near this utility easement and, and a, a future junior high. And so, if you look down at the bottom of that property and then you look at kind of where these easements are cons, are configured, they do not encroach on either of those facilities. And so, the, we, we really felt like that it was able to accommodate what was necessary by way of utility transmission, uh, while also not, um, limiting the district's ability to accomplish what it had intended to accomplish in the future, uh, when that up, when that need presented itself. So, um, additionally, CPS had, um, and it's, it's all included in the packet, there are two appraisals. Uh, CPS had the property, uh, that they intend to use, uh, for this purpose appraised, and it came back at a value just over sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, initially, we were, we, we really had a, a desire to try and work with CPS in the least invasive way, maybe trade some fencing and that sort of thing, but, but learned that per statute, uh, requirements, you can't do that, and that they have to pay fair market value. Uh, and secondly, we can't pay the appraisal value necessarily, um, that CPS provided, that the district had to conduct their own appraisal. Um, so we, uh, commissioned, uh, that service, and we had our own appraisal done, and in fact, our appraisal came back lower than the original appraisal that CPS had done. So, then by statute, we were able to recommend the board's consideration of the appraisal that was a better value for the district. And so, what we're bringing to you tonight is a resolution which would essentially, um, give Mr. Bryant the authority, uh, to allow, uh, the two point three acre sale of these easement areas to CPS for the purposes of utility, um, uh, installation and pass-through, um, while at the same time not encroaching on what the district had originally planned in two thousand and seven, uh, if we were ever to build a high school and a, and a middle school on that site. Um, and, uh, the, the transaction would include City Public Service then paying the district, uh, the appraised value of sixty-seven thousand and, and some change for, um, the damages and use, if you will. So, they will return that back to the district. Everywhere that is labeled a, um, temporary construction easement is accessible for the district to do what it needs to. Uh, just the area that is the electrical easement there, uh, you can't, we, district won't be able to put anything on that particular seventy-five foot wide, um, strip.
Not even parking area?
Uh, Mr., I don't think parking area either, but, but you want to clarify?
CPS will own that property, uh, because they are selling it.
Okay. Right, I understand, yeah. Cause normally on an easement, you don't, well, some easements, they just go right through your property, I, you don't actually sell it to them, but anyway, this is, we're selling them the acreage.
Yeah, so, so like I was sa, yeah, saying earlier, we, we were, we, initially, we thought, well, we can just kind of work with them on that deal and, but the reality is by statute, we had to go through this process of multiple appraisals and-
Okay.
Actually, a, a resolution and subsequent sale of the easement area.
So, are you, i- is the sale gonna be from the tracks, which is the end of the property, in seventy-five feet or seventy-five feet away from and then?
Yeah.
So, what happens to that seventy-five feet?
That's the district's property as well, still.
So, it's kind of a, kind of like the border fence, huh, kind of splits the property in half?
So, so, so to speak, yes, sir?
So, the railroad requires that seventy-five foot setback from the railroad tracks?
Right.
So, the district wouldn't be able to use that?
That's, that was my, that was my understanding.
Yeah.
And then the e, the whatever they construct there, that's that much more property, and that's what we're selling? That little piece that whatever they're gonna construct?
So, we'll still own the seventy-five feet between the railroad track and the easement, and then there would be another seventy-five foot, uh, after that, that CPS will own?
So, it's a hundred and fifty feet, actually? Cause we can't use the, the other, we can't use the, the in-between seventy-five?
Uh, the railroad, correct, but the railroad would, I think, uh, they require, they would require us to have that easement-
Regardless.
Setback regardless.
Okay, okay.
Uh, for safety reasons.
Sure.
And to protect their, their investment in the railroad tracks, uh, so if, my mind it works out.
Okay. Well, I mean, could we not use it some sort of landscaping type, uh, I don't know, any horticulture or something like that, where they could come in there and do, do some type of landscaping in that, that seventy-five feet?
Uh, we would have to check into it, uh, just currently trees and, uh-
Right, right, right.
Uh, which will probably remain.
Okay.
Uh, but we needed to do some alternative landscaping.
I mean, for the, the horticulture class or something like that, you know, go in there and do some type of landscaping or something like that, that- We're not building on the property, but we, you know?
It's, it's a possibility, I guess, we're not, yet, uh-
I think I'll go run on it now and then.
Well, right now, that, that seventy-five foot setback as well as the seventy-five foot eas, easement, easement area is, is heavily wooded. So, they're gonna have to cut, cut some trees, um, which, uh, is in the resolution that gives them an authority to do that. Of course, they'll have to work with the city on all that permitting and all that sort of thing to be able to do that.
Also partially a flat plain area, uh, that they'll be taking, uh, later when they use.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I believe we're ready for you.
All right. Uh, trustees, I recommend the board adopt a resolution authorizing the conveyance of an electric transmission line easement consisting of approximately two point five one one acres of the property and a temporary construction easement located at one three seven nine two Dunlop Road, Elmandorf, Texas, seven eight one one two, to City Public Service for a sales price of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which was determined by formal appraisal as required by law.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to authorize board president to sign documents required for an easement and sale of property to City Public Service. Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Garza. We have a second by Mr. Feller. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. By the way, that was a great job of distilling three hundred pages worth of documentation down to just a few minutes. So, thank you very much for that. All right, item D, discussion and consideration of architectural design and construction administration services for renovation to John Glenn High School Annex.
Yes, uh, Mr. Toscano, uh, Mr. Bryant, board members. What we're asking you to look at this evening is an agreement to, uh, to enter into with LPA Architects for the design, uh, and, um, uh, construction documents and construction administration of any renovations that we may do at, uh, the, uh, John, what we're going to be calling the John Glenn, uh, High School Annex. It's the old John Glenn Campus, and as you know, part of the, uh, not, part of the bond money, but part of the overall facility management plan was to convert that campus into an additional, uh, high school facility to allow us to continue to grow and expand as our needs expand at the high school. Uh, the estimated cost right now of that, uh, and it's very rough right now, is about two point eight million in cost to do those renovations. And to the estimated cost of the architectural fees would be two hundred thirty thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, the agreement, if you approve it this evening, would allow us to enter into that contract with LPA. As you know, they're the architect that's on the bond program and other prom, programs we have right now in, in the area of construction. Uh, the actual final fee will be based on the actual cost of the construction because it's always a, a percentage of the, uh, their fee is a percentage of the actual construction cost. Uh, the percentage is determined by a pre-approved, uh, rate structure that the board approved many years ago that we still use today. And so, that's the basis of this estimated cost. And so, we will be glad to answer any questions you have about this, uh, proposed contract.
Any questions for Mr. Shelby?
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, trustees, I recommend board approval of the attached proposal from LPA for architecture, design, and construction administration services for renovations to the John Glenn High School Annex.
Thank you, sir. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the proposal from LPA Architecture for the John Glenn High School Annex. Chair will entertain a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item E, discussion and consideration of civil engineering, design, and construction administration services for asphalt projects.
Yes, board, uh, once again, this is a, a request for you to consider approval of a contract with CDS Murray Services. They're the civil engineering firm that we, uh, uh, would like to engage in, in putting together design, uh, construction documents, and construction administration of asphalt projects. Uh, these projects would be at Legacy Middle School, Salado Intermediate School, uh, the East Central Maintenance Facility, Highland Forest Elementary School, and, uh, the north parking lot of the East Central High School. Uh, those projects are, uh, uh, projected to be around one point, one point, just under one point four million dollars. And the estimated, or not the estimated, the fees for the services by CDS Murray Services would be a fixed fee at eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and, um, we have done a, a number of, uh, projects with CDS Murray Services and have found them to be an excellent, uh, civil engineering firm. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that, but that's basically just trying to see if you're okay with us working with them to get this asphalt projects designed and, and out to bid and, and done this summer.
So, so this is, none of this is for the actual work, it's just for the design phase?
Just for the design.
Okay.
Design, construction documents, and construction, uh, administration.
Okay, all right. Hey, questions?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the attached proposal from CDS Murray Services for civil engineering, design, and construction administration services for the asphalt projects as presented.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the proposal from CDS Murray Services for design and construction administration services for asphalt projects.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. All right, we are now going to go into executive session. The Board of Trustees, on March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, beginning at eight twenty-five PM, convened in a closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Governance Code, Sections five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, and five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters. All right, we're returning from executive session. The presiding officer announced at the end of the closed meeting. The board ended its closed meeting at nine oh seven PM on March the twenty-second. No action was taken in the closed meeting. All right, um, in the matter of a settlement, student versus East Central Independent School District, board will entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the school's attorney, and direct the superintendent and the school's attorney to proceed as discussed in closed session concerning resolution of the special education due process hearing.
We have a motion by Ms. Brazil. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Feller. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, before we adjourn, do you have anything else for us, Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have multiple seconds. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone.